Okay, it's seven o'clock and time to be get our regularly scheduled Baxter City Council meeting. We welcome you if you're observing from afar. First thing we'll do is roll call administrator.
That's it, time to go home.
I don't see I'm here.
Here.
We'll just go ahead and go through it.
Our order. I follow cross.
Cross is here.
Cross and Holman are here.
Is here, yeah.
Lissio here.
This is here.
Abbott is here.
It's here and Olson's here, so we will move forward. This time I'd ask you to rise to recite the pledge to the flag with us if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm not sure if Brad is a. Is there or not, we're looking to see if there was any additions or changes to the agenda. I'm going to assume there are not. Public comments, if there are, we'll come back to it. Otherwise, we will, we'll press forward. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered non controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any council person, staff, citizen, or meeting attendee can request one or more items be pulled from the consent agenda. And the item will be pulled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda. Otherwise, the following items will be passed in one motion. A approved city council work, city council work session minutes from August 18th, 2020. Be approved city council minutes from August 18th, 2020. See approved payment of bills and finance report. The approved lawful gambling permit for Nisswa Lions Club to conduct pool tabs at Prairie Bay. One, five, one, one, five, Edgewood Drive, Baxter. E adopt resolution 2020 dash zero five, one. Authorizing execution of the 2020 CARES Act grant agreement with growing county. F approve amendment to the Good Samaritan purchase agreement. G approve amendments to the city hunting map to allow bow hunting for properties located on Hollywood Drive. And to allow bow hunting on the city owned 200 acres located west of the Mississippi River Overlook Park. H accept parks commission minutes from August 24th, 2020. I accept that long range planning commission minutes from August 24th, 2020. J approve appointment to the seasonal position of park attendant slash streets and utilities maintenance. K approve filter media and related repairs to filter two in the water treatment plant. L approve agreement between Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. Central Lakes College and the city of Baxter for student supervised pre internship training.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by cross.
Second.
Second by Lissio, any further discussion or comments? Roll call.
Ross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Lissio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
And Olson.
Yes. Let's backtrack a minute, Brad, were there any public comments?
There are no public comments, but there is one addition to the agenda.
Okay.
That is 11C as a closed session. As outlined by Minnesota statute 13D point zero five subdivision C for a purchase of property. For the parcel. Parcels that are known as parcel ID numbers four, zero, zero, five, zero, seven, one, eight, and four, zero, zero, eight, zero, seven, seven, five.
That'll be added to our close session. Number 11 is what you're saying.
Right.
Okay. All right. Number eight, I guess, go ahead, Brad, approve proposal.
Sure, as counsel has is aware, city staff has been working for the last forty five, sixty some days. Related, working on our CARES funding and identifying expenditures. That would meet the spirit and intent of the care, the provisions of the CARES Act. Included in your packet as a result of our work. Based on the current US Treasury and state of Minnesota management and budget office guidelines. We've identified a list of expenditures that. Were compiled by staff and vetted through administration of finance to assure that the, the proposed expenditures. Meet the three CARES eligibility criteria, those three criterias are included in the case item. At this time, we've set time aside to discuss anything that's on the proposed list that council would like to talk about. However, before we incur expenditures, we're asking the council tonight. To concur with staff's recommendation, our proposal, or to amend the proposed expenditures. And, and adopt those or approve those subject to a, one last cursory review by our auditors. The list is, is broken down into expense or capital expenditures, repairs. As well as improvements to our infrastructure. And how we operate. The spreadsheet does have the category plus an explanation of the work that's to be done. I don't want to go into. Drastic details, but at this point in time, I would ask counsel if there is any questions or if there's an item in which you want to. Discuss in regards to questioning it's. It's a. Compliance with the three eligibility criteria that are outlined in the RCA.
Okay, I think everybody received it in the packet, had a chance to look at it, any corrections, comments.
I have my questions answered earlier today from administrator Chapulas, so I'm good.
Good. Good. I know they, it's taken up a lot of staff time. But you know, necessary time that had to be put into that, but. This is our chance, if you saw anything that you're skeptical of, or you'd like to change or talk about, this would be the time. Seeing none then. We'd look for a motion to. Approve what's been laid out to us and have them drive forward.
Motion to approve.
Which is my cross.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Lissio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes. That motion passes, move on to our council comments, let's, County.
Um, two positives, one, I was at a Baxter business a few days ago. And the owner made a point to come up to me and say how much he appreciated a personal phone call from administrator Chapulas regarding. The CARES grant and wanting him to make sure, you know, that he could apply for that. And he was just so appreciative, so that personal touch, I think, really was nice to hear about and for you to do that, Brad, thank you. And then secondly, I was ashamed more than once now that those mobile traffic reminders have been out and about in Baxter. More than one time I've gotten slowed down, but I think it's been really helpful for. Especially the neighbors who live on those busy streets to know that that's there. So I appreciate that by the Baxter police and the highway department.
Yeah, good, thanks. Zach.
Just thanks staff for their work on the CARES project there. I'm still hopeful that we can look towards ways to change the way we do business in general. As we move forward and learn from what we, what we have been going through in 2020. But I just wanted to say thanks to the staff, I know that a lot of parts have been moving over the last 60 days or so. And I'm glad to see that we're, we're making progress.
Thank you, Todd.
I just would add to the, the praise of staff and the folks that are working on these projects, I would add to that, the commission members too. They put in a lot of time to kind of verify and, and put input together for, for staff. And specifically the projects that are at hand. And so I still have the habit of driving around and looking at all the, the projects that are underway. And thrilled to see bike trail on Oakwood coming to fruition, the Coles connection. These transportation connections have been kind of years in the making, so it's great to see them this close to, to open for, for our public.
Thank you. Mark.
Oh yes, I'm. I think it's amazing, even with all the difficulties that we've been dealing with. That we're still getting our work done. Staff's obviously pulling together and getting it done. And even though it's, it's probably a hassle to, to do it between being in the office and being teleworking and. You know, I haven't heard any, any negative from the public, so. You know, just everyone has been, you know, very cooperative and very patient and. You know, like I think I say every couple of weeks, we'll all get through this, just going to take, you know, a little time and. And lots of patience, so thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, everybody has seen the news and seen what's been going on, even just this last weekend. And I just want to. Shout out to our police department, I think we've seen what can happen to our police officers. Through the fault of their own, just from doing their jobs. And so I just, chief, you're doing a great job and your, your troops are doing a good job with you. I know that you've trained them well, and I know they represent the city well. And these are, these are definitely trying times for your staff and just appreciate how you people are functioning out there. And God bless you and protect you, you know, in doing your jobs on a daily basis. And then one other little, little comment here that. I know that. And Marcus has alluded to this often about, you know, having patience with each other, so on and so forth. And. On a, on occasion, Lou Holtz at the end of his. I forgot the right name there, not the end of his newscast. He makes the comment, be good to yourself and be good to others, watch others too. And just a homely little illustration, but I was coming back from the southern part of the state, I got to St. Cloud and needed gas. Pulled into the station there, and while I was filling my truck, which takes like an hour and a half. There was a lady working on her little beautiful car. And she had gallons of antifreeze and gallons of oil on the hood of the, on the roof of the car was 91 degrees. And she was over there struggling, so when I got done with the truck, I pulled ahead and I just walked over to her and I said. How's it going, you got it under control? And she had just come from St. Paul, thermostat must have stuck. And everything had just gone to pot, and she was close to being in tears. She said, I think I have it now, though, and my, my daughter lives in St. Cloud, she's going to come over and help me here. So I turned, I turned to leave and she said to me, thanks for stopping. She said, nobody else has even asked me or talked to me. Get a little emotional here, but I think it just, it drew, I'm not looking for a purple heart or a trophy here. But I mean, I think it just emphasizes the point that we do, we do need to look out for each other. Okay, city administrator, bail me out.
Just a quick reminder that we do have budget work sessions scheduled prior to our next council meeting in two weeks. That begins at 5pm.
Okay, that it?
That is all I have.
Okay, city attorney.
Just looking for a motion to go into closed session for the reasons shown on the agenda.
Okay.
Motion to go to closed.
Which is my cross, second by Lissio, roll call.
Cross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Lissio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes, we'll be going into close at 7:15, anybody who is watching, we will be coming back into a public setting after we're done with this. If you're interested.
Okay, we're back into our open session. Look for our city attorney to lead us through some motions here.
Sure, on the first property we talked about, I don't think we need a motion formally. There was consensus to just direct staff to further negotiations. On the second property of Fleet Farm Properties, looking for a motion to accept the counter offer as discussed and closed.
So moved.
Motion by Cross. Second by, is that you Zach?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Cross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Vicio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes. That motion passes. Next.
Also looking for one more motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the salary adjustment regarding the vacancy in the supervisor position.
So moved.
Motion by Cross.
Second.
Second by Licio. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call.
Cross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Vicio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes. Did we cover everything there?
I think we did.
Okay, thank you. Anything we missed tonight, or are we done?
No, we need a motion for adjournment, that's all.
So moved.
Motion by Zach.
Second.
Second by Cross. Roll call.
Cross.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Vicio.
Yes.
Tabit.
Yes.
And Olson.
Yes. Have a great evening, have a great rest of the week.
Bring out the letter, it's wedding week.
Okay. What time are they eating? That's all I'm looking at.
All day.